I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee on the evening of March 28th at 6:05 PM. May I have a roll call, please? Ms. Barry? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yeah.
Ms. Swob?
Here.
Ms. Powell? Here. Please rise for the standing legions. Ms. Petry, can you please lead us?
To the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would, can I have a motion, please, to open a public hearing for the 2022-2023 school budget?
Motion.
Stand.
May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? She, yes, we have a yes from Ms. Leonard. Ms. Howard, can you give us an overview of the budget?
Yes. So, we met in a budget subcommittee meeting today, and I presented to the budget subcommittee a summary of the current salary, the level service budget that we're proposing, as well as a needs-based budget, which was also proposed. So, would you like it up on the screen?
If we could do that, that would be great.
If we could do the summary. And I will, I will go through each one of those quickly, as people have heard quite a bit of detail in the budget subcommittee meeting this evening. So, let me put this on. You'll be able to see it on the screen. There we go. So, just as an overview for the public, as well as other committee members here, I had provided you all with the current school year budget, because I think it's important to see what the actual spending in the current year is, and then take a look at what we're proposing for next school year, both at a level service and a needs-based budget. So, the current year, our overall total operating budget is $27,499,737. Or am I on the wrong one? I'm on the wrong one. Total operating budget is, in the current year, is $25,603,672. That includes all of the salaries in the school district, inclusive of salaries that are covered by a grant, or many grants, many different grants that we have, as well as all of the expenses that are covered under the LEA budget. So presently, we are covering, as I said, $21,824,810 in salaries and $3,778,862 in expenses. So with the total operating budget this year of $25 million and change, it's important to know how that is covered. So the town had allocated funds to the school district last year around about this time, or a month or two ahead, in the amount of $22,842,750. If you subtract that from the total operating budget, clearly, some more funds are needed. And in order to cover the additional salaries that we need for our school district to run this year, we allocated $2,360,922 in grants. We have several one-time grants that we have had this school year, S.R. One and S.R. Two Grants. And out of those two grants, along with our traditional entitlement grants, such as the 240 Special Education Grant, Title I Grants, and some other just yearly entitlement grants that we do receive from the state, we were able to cover that $2 million worth of salaries. The town also allocated some additional funds for us in, I believe it was September, around about September or October, to help offset the, some of the salaries that we have, and that total amount was $400,000. And that came from town opera fundings that were tied to COVID, just like the S.R. One and S.R. Two Grants being tied to COVID. So now, moving forward into next year, we've spent the last several months doing budget preparatory work, looking at each individual school pretty forensically, in terms of what we need for staffing, what we project we will need for expenses, everything from materials and supplies, to contracts for things like Xerox, to curriculum purchases that we have, technology, overall maintenance of our school buildings, athletics, and the like. And we did a projection, level service budget is simply explained that if we were to open the doors next year, providing the same level of service to our students and staff that we did this year, what would that cost us? So when we looked at that as a level service budget, we determined that we would need, teachers have steps and lanes that are part of their contract every year, and our outside contracts, like I said, things like the telephones that we use, the technology that we use, the curriculum platforms that we have, those additional contracts. We took a look at all of that to project the cost for next year. So for a level service budget, and that means keeping the bodies that we have this year, and the material supplies and goods and services, in terms of salaries, the projection is $21,114,628. And the expenses are $5,442,619. And again, that includes traditional steps and lane changes for staff, and the increased contractual costs for any contracts we have for curriculum and goods and services, transportation, athletics, and the like. We also took a look at the projection for grants next year. We know that many of the COVID grants that we received last year, as well as this year, were one-time funding sources, or in some cases, a grant that would last for 24 months. And obviously, at the end of this year, those grants will no longer be available to us. So when you see the difference between what we've charged to grants this year compared to what we project we can charge next year, it's because some of those grants are going away. And again, grants are, entitlement grants are somewhat predictable, but it's risky, because we don't know what the state is going to do with their budget, and oftentimes, they cut certain line items from their budget, which directly affect our grants, in either lowering them or having them disappear. So the grants that we allocated toward salaries for next year are grants that we are pretty assured that will be coming our way pretty close to what we have this year. And so, we allocated $1,665,750 of the salaries that you see in that total operating cost to grants, to give us an overall figure of what a level service, if we're going to open the doors next year in a similar fashion to this year, which I call sort of sitting in neutral, and not with all of the additional support services, staffing, or items that we believe we needed in a needs-based budget. We are looking at that full operating cost to be a little over 26, about $26.5 million. If we were to receive the funds from the town that we believe we anticipate, that the town's going to be able to support us with an increase of $900,000 over what they appropriated for last year, that will leave us in a deficit to start of about $1.1 million. Now, there are many factors over the next several months that will go into taking that $1.1 million and getting it down to zero, which is the goal. And that includes any additional funding sources that we can receive, increase in any of the funding, traditional allocations for entitlement grants that we receive, so any and any new grants that we can put our hands on, as well as looking at some of our circuit break of funding, and what we might anticipate coming forward that we can allocate to offset that number. The other factor that goes into it is, as teachers come to the end of a school year, some teachers decide they're going to move on, either to a new district, or in many cases, a new profession after the last few years. And if we have teachers that are leaving at a high salary, say, a master's plus 60 salary, we budget for that next teacher to commit at a much lower salary. We typically budget a master's step one or step two, to be safe, and we stick to that figure in terms of how we are rehiring for those positions. And then, I also offered to the committee a needs-based budget. I think we can slide up a little bit, Laurie. And a needs-based budget, for definition, is what do we feel as a school district is the appropriate funding for school, for our students to be able to be on the same level playing field as students in the surrounding communities around, you know, around us, and with the materials, supplies, classroom size, certified teaching positions that we need for our students at every grade level. So the needs-based budget is reflective of a number of teachers that the principals and administration have asked for, in order to provide, continue that small group size, to put specialists in classrooms, such as certified social studies teachers, teaching social studies, certified math teachers, teaching math, and then giving our students additional support and opportunities in foreign language, bringing band back, providing interventionists for our students to help mitigate some of the learning loss and accelerate them forward at every grade level. And so that needs-based budget, in terms of a full operating budget, would be $27,499,737. And that is inclusive of $22,530,40 worth of salaries, and $5,446,697 worth of expenses. We anticipate, like I said, a projected increase from the town, from this year's budget to next year's, of $900,000. Our grants, we anticipate, again, to be less next year, because we're losing a lot of that one-time COVID funding, in which we put salaries and teachers into this particular school year instead of last year. So we're looking at about $1,665,750 as an offset to that salary figure. We do not anticipate that the town will be receiving more opera funds, in which they'll be able to provide the school district with the additional $400,000, as they did this year. And therefore, a needs-based budget, if we were to receive the town funding, which will be increased by $900,000, and if our grant stayed somewhat stable, we would be in a deficit of a little over $2 million. I do think it is important for the committee to recognize why we do a needs-based budget. I think it's important that that, the understanding of that budget, and the story that it tells, I've, we've told this same story now five years in a row. This is the fifth year. And it's a story that's reflective of the true and continuing needs of our students and staff in the Winthrop Public Schools, where the voice, the school committee, and certainly myself, are the voice of the students and the families in these communities, as well as our staff. And I believe it's our responsibility to clearly articulate those needs, based on our vision, our mission, and our strategic plan. And to be really point-blank honest with people, that this is the type of a budget that's reflective of what is needed for our kids to be provided, and our staff to be able to provide a free and appropriate public education that enables our students to be on an equal playing field with their peers in communities that surround us. So I would recommend to this committee as a whole, that you accept my recommendation of accepting the needs-based budget, and allowing us to move forward, to continue to plan for that, knowing that we will have to continue to adjust our own practice on the inside, and depending upon what the final outcome in terms of appropriation from the town, and an appropriation from the state and federal government with the grants. At the end of the day, whatever that is, will be where we move forward. But I do believe that that needs-based budget is one that clearly articulates from a very, very deep, deep dive into what our kids need, and repetitive, I know I'm repetitive. I know I keep saying, this is what we need. Our needs don't go away just because the funding doesn't exist. Our needs continue, and that gap continues to get wider and wider in terms of the money that is needed to support the school district. Our per pupil expenditure is low. We are going to be providing the committee with a crosswalk of what is spent by other communities in terms of students' own learning, and ours is certainly, certainly on the low end when it comes to the final budget. But I would appreciate the support of the committee in approving that needs-based budget, so that I can then take it to the town's finance committee and the town council, to enable them to understand what our needs are, and to be able to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the town, for what the town has, for money for the entire community, and we know we're one piece of the community. But it absolutely tells the story of what our students.
Fantastic, thank you. And with that, I will open it up to the public. Do we have any public comment tonight? Hearing none, I will ask for a German.
Do your, go ahead.
Second. First and a second, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. I would like to call to order the regular, the regular school committee, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Present.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
I'm here. Do we have any delegates and visitors tonight?
We do not.
And do we have any public comment tonight?
We did not, I did not receive anything prior to coming tonight.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2022?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swob, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Littary, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Can I have a motion, please, to approve warrant SVW 22-6 in the amount of $189,312.20?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Littary, second by Ms. Petry. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 22-20 in the amount of $837,326.55?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Ms. Swob. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Stand.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
We have no budget transfers tonight for buildings and ground. We have a motion by Winarc for the walk-run role Miller Field. And with that motion, can I have a vote to also waive the rental fee?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swob, second by Mr. Littary. Can I have a roll call, please? Ms. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for the William P. Gorman Fort Banks PTO use of the WPG cafeteria for the ice cream social?
Motion.
By Ms. Petry, second by Mr. Matucci. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Can we have a motion for the Winthrop Police Explorers Mass Explorer Competition, to have the Mass Explorer Competition in the ATC Cafeteria, and with that, a vote to waive the rental fee?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Mr. Littary. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
And our other two, I believe we are going to?
Table.
Table until we have more information. Subcommittee report, the, on budget.
Lisa probably did that for me.
She did. Do we need to take a vote?
We did a good job, too, by the way.
Thank you.
I think we're okay. We're going to take a vote later on, I think, at the, down the bottom, under new business.
Under new business. Okay, fantastic. And our policy chair is not here, so we will not have that report tonight. We have homeschool applications.
We have none this evening.
Any appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leave of absence?
Yes, but tonight, we just have, we have three resignations, Megan Dooley, Scott DuPont, and Leif Faber. Those positions have been posted, and we are actively seeking to cover those positions prior to them leaving. Scott DuPont will not be leaving till the end of the school year, he's moving too far to commute. And the other two positions have been posted, I believe, that Megan Dooley's position has been filled with a long-term sub, I believe that's biology till the end of the school year, if I'm correct. And Mr. Faber is an ESP who's changing careers, and I believe that's actively posted.
Okay. And that brings us to new business, the FY '23 budget.
So Lisa explained, and we had a vote at the budget subcommittee. We voted to push forward the needs-based budget, which is $27,499,737. And we need a full committee vote to push that forward to the town.
Can I have a motion, please, on that budget?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swob, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Petry, any discussion?
I just wanted to say that, you know, Lisa and the staff, great job. Every year, I say, you know, they can't do better. And there's, they can't work harder, and they do. They work harder, they do better. So I'm so happy with what they've done. Also, we know there's a stretch, it's a reach. Town, we have so much money, and like Lisa says, other departments, they'll get, you know, they have needs and increases, they have to get a piece of the, whatever we have extra. So whatever they give us, I say, in the way that I feel, we'll make it work as best we can, and we appreciate whatever they can do.
The other comment?
Can I ask Mr. Matucci why he requires a full committee vote?
That's what they, that's what it says we have to do.
A full committee?
You want us to vote.
No.
You can't vote.
Right.
But we have to.
I just want to clarify that for anybody out there that thinks I'm not trying.
Full committee except you.
Except you.
And I, if I can, to the chair.
Yes.
As with the town budget and the school budget, where, you know, there's, there's some structural deficits that we're going to have to address in a short period of time, in the next couple of years. You know, we've been fortunate to receive some money from state, federal, and, but we can't forget that we're creating some, again, structural deficits that are going to need to be addressed in the coming future, if we want to maintain the level of education which our children deserve and expect. I just want to throw that out there.
Appreciate that, yes.
I want to second that, Jim, because, you know, really, as, as education goes, so goes the town. And there's no, if you look around in any town in the Commonwealth, those that have funded, are able to fund education well, are doing well, and their kids are doing well. So we, the kids work hard, teachers are working hard, we can't do better without the money. That's just the bottom line. And I, Jim, you're absolutely right, we're going to have to take it on the chin, or we're going to have to really figure out how we can move our finances in a different direction in the next couple of years.
I would like to say that the proposed budget, I think, creates opportunities that families and students in this town have been looking for and asking for, and also is responsive to the increased needs of the students coming out of interrupted learning for two years. And I think that the supports that are in place are going to help minimize the increased need in the future, or the potential for an increased need in the future, if we can address and kind of squash the needs, or address the needs and squash the issues now.
Very good. And any other discussion? And with that, can I get a roll call, please? Mr. Littary?
Stand.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, public relations.
I think we need a calendar.
The calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the calendar. Can we, I have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 school calendar.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Ms. Petry. Do you need discussion on this calendar, or any questions on the calendar?
Just to give a tiny bit of background, I won't go on for hours, I promise. Three options were presented. This calendar has been looked at by the teaching staff, the teachers' union, the administration, myself. We cross-referenced it with a number of other communities. We also looked at traditionally, what have we been doing? And wanted to make sure that we could maximize the Labor Day weekend for families who are planning to go away, because I know lots of families do go away. Traditionally, we have started over the past several years before Labor Day, we had some options on there, I'm sorry, yes, before Labor Day. We did have an option to start after Labor Day for the students. I always hope we don't have more than one snow day. However, given my history of calling snow days even when it doesn't snow, you know, we can anticipate that we will have at least five. So the, the choice of having new teacher orientation on the 25th of August, having teachers have two days of professional development prior to the student showing up, so for that professional development to happen on August 29th and August 30th, which is similar to what we did this year, then students would start on the 31st and come to school on the 31st and the 1st of September. Then there would be no school on Friday, the 2nd of September. And obviously, Saturday and Sunday, we don't come to school. Then the 5th of September would be Labor Day, so they would have a four-day weekend for those families that do like to travel over the long holiday weekend. I think some of the important things that were talked about were engagement of students in those first two days, where we're shuffling a lot of papers, and we're getting to know each other, and we're filling out a lot of stuff, and asking parents to fill out a lot of stuff. Getting those, having two days right before the Labor Day weekend to get all of that work done, allows us to have our kids to come back to us on Tuesday after vacation, ready to go, and ready to dig in deep. So that was the wish of the administration, and also of the union, which was great, that we had a consensus on that. It would allow us to have a last day of school of June 16th for kids, when we fit the 180 days in, and that's without snow days. So I'm hoping for June 16th, but I thank you, I just wanted to give you that explanation.
Just point of clarification, June 15th?
It says June 15th on, on your calendar in front of you. However, if you look at November, it says there's 18 days of school, but there's really only 17, because one day in November is a district-wide professional development day for staff, so the kids don't come to school, the teachers do, but the kids don't. So therefore, to get their 180 days, their last day would be not the 15th, but the 16th for the students.
Okay. Any other?
Just one question, would that be Election Day?
So, election, no, Election Day is the 3rd and the 4th, and from what I understand, the elections are not, no longer in the schools, and they're still where, where they are from when, unless that's changed, and nobody?
No, it hasn't changed, but it hasn't. I just want to, so you're assuming elections would not be in the schools?
Correct.
Okay.
And I can double-check that with Denise, if we have to look at it again, we can.
I think that's still the day, though.
Usually, it's the PD day.
That's the PD day, because they're all just.
Oh, the PD days is the 3rd of, oh.
Right.
So it's whatever election date.
So it would be, the PD day for the teachers would be in school, the children would not.
Correct.
Okay, just want to confirm.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Haynes? Yes, Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, now, public relations.
Want me to start?
Yes.
I'll start with public relations. So, I want to read the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients this year, Annalise Bruno, Aidan Deentmont, Maggie Doig, Anwa Atabai, William Gillis, Ari Hain, Ryan Cefory, Ramsey Kaladi, William McMullin, and Brandon Morgan. Congratulations to all. And the Winthrop Drama Society moved on to the semifinals with their production of
And the Winthrop Drama Society moved on to the semifinals with their production of Every Man. They were awarded Best Ensemble, the Best Ensemble Award, and the following individual awards. Stage Manager Award, Jolene Zakaria, Acting Award, Tess Scout Thompson, Master Carpentry Award, Brandon Morgan, Acting Award, Sarah Delahanty, Acting Award, Dan Tracy, Lighting Award, Jennifer Hickey. And this group will be performing at the Regionals on Saturday, April second, at North Reading High School. They will have their first performance at nine thirty, and they are having an open dress rehearsal on March thirty-first at seven o'clock PM for the community, for the Winthrop High School community. So look for some more of that in upcoming notifications from the school. The winner of the Winthrop High School Student Council Polar Plunge Fifty-Fifty was Susan Kelly, total pot was eight hundred and forty-five dollars, so congratulations. The Athiti Cummings School Council raised four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents for the Ukraine, that money was sent to the Red Cross. And the annual MASC Spring Leadership Conference was held. Mia Matucci, J.D. Parker, and Mia Norris were presented with the Commonwealth Award to recognize their leadership efforts. Mia Matucci was named the NIMASK Regional Recipient of an Unsung Hero Award, and hats off to all the students and all their, and their advisors, Ms. Del Solio, and Mrs. Rochette, Rochette. So stumbling, it's a budget brain, budget brain fright. But we're, we're, so many good things have, have been going on with our students, and they're, they're plugging forward, spring athletics is, is up and running, it's nice to see kids outside in the air, and, and so we're excited to start to focus on those games, and the Drama Society, and the rest of our extracurricular activities that our students are all involved in, and the nice weather is coming.
Wonderful. Anything to add, Mr. Matucci? Ms. Petrie?
A note of appreciation for special education teachers right now, and a lot of them are assembling MCAS alt portfolios, which takes a lot of time and effort, so appreciation to them, and then other teachers are also planning their parent-teacher conferences right now, and have sent home progress reports and report cards, so, just a thank you.
Ms. Luteri?
Just on the Drama Society, it's almost like, and we don't, but we almost take them for granted, they're so successful, and such an incredibly run society, individual awards, team awards, group awards, it's just, it's remarkable what they've done with the Drama Society, and I just, hats off to them, and best of luck in the semis.
Ms. Woe? I don't know if she's able to say anything, or if she has anything to add.
Oh, can we take her off, she's on mute. If Suzanne wants to say anything. Hold on, my volume's up. Go ahead, Suzanne.
I wanted to say a small thank you to the GFB staff for the enrichment hours that they did over the past six weeks. It was really just an amazing, peculiar effort, and as I understand it, they were, those classes, which were about an hour on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, after school, were filled up the day. So it was really wonderful, and really, people pitched in by dropping the stage, it was really lovely, so thanks, thanks to the GFB staff for kind of going the extra mile in time, people don't have a lot to give, so I really appreciate that.
One more, that's great, and I concur, it's that one extra hour that sometimes we don't always have to give. One other public relations, big shout-out to Eileen Pearson. So Ms. Pearson became a grandmother for the first time, so I want to congratulate her on that, she had a granddaughter named Leah, and she's very excited to now step into the grandma arena with me, so it's a lot of fun.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.